This is the the regular meeting. We're going to call to attention. And I just want to state that we did have an executive session for some legal matters prior to the scheduled meeting here this evening. The other thing, I'd like to start the meeting with a with a moment of silence if I could for past well, Vincent de Blasio passed away this week. Mr. de Blasio was an active member of this community volunteering for many civic events. He served as mayor of Bridgeville from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-six as a member of the planning commission, among many other community positions. Council acknowledges Mr. de Blasio's many contributions and extends our sympathy members of Mr. de Blasio's family. Thank you. Roll call, Joe.
I started the recording. First one up, Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Petroselli.
Here.
Mr. Gallarducci.
Here.
Mr. Colosimo.
Here.
Mr. Verducci.
Here.
Mrs. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Zasowski.
Here.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Here.
Engineer Brett.
Here.
Chief King.
Here.
I'm Joe Cower. Chief Castain. Assistant Chief Maglan. Then Director Miller.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Let's open up the public comment. Do we have any visitors here that want to speak this evening?
Excuse me, this is Bob Farrar. I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, hi. Incidentally, about about Mayor Pat de Blasio's funeral service. I've many of you attended, I assume, but they had over at the Holy Child Church or Corpus Christi Church, they had two, a male and a female opera singer, and it was the most moving funeral service mass that I've ever attended. It was truly a very touching ceremony. At any rate, I just wanted to make that statement, but I wanted to ask you primarily about about a year ago, excuse me, I asked the members of the planning commission and members of council, actually, I think begged was probably a better word, to put together a major comprehensive road system that would solve the Washington Avenue, Washington Pike traffic congestion, north and south, and also the, I think I suggested the Making Bar Hill Road and Baldwin Street, two one-way streets, as I've given you some drawings about, again, to solve the east-west traffic congestion problem that plagued the community for so many, for almost fifty years. I'd like to know where you guys are in presenting that large comprehensive road plan to PennDOT and SPC, and primarily not only because it's obviously necessary to eliminate the, to do something about restoring the economic viability of both the Washington Avenue and the Baldwin Street business district, but as you, as we have all heard, PennDOT's planning on putting a toll booth or something on the bridge over Route Fifty on Seventy-Nine, whether they do it or don't do it, it certainly brings our attention to the fact that we have to do something to completely solve our fifty-year-old traffic congestion plan. I'd like to know what you guys have done on that and where you are in that process.
Well, first of all, Bob, we all have a copy of what you've proposed to us or presented to us on several occasions, and we-
Oh, good.
Yeah, so we're also, if you, I'm not sure if you've been at the most recent planning commission meetings or not, but they're they're in the, we're in the planning stages of actually hiring someone to complete a plan, you know, a long-term plan that has a lot of information that we've gathered, that you've presented, that the ideas of the planning commission, all of that is being taken into consideration with that planning commission, so.
Oh, good. Who are you, and not, I don't mean to interrupt you there, Bill, but are you, will it be Lennon Smith Soleray that's going to be doing that for you?
We don't know. We've we've taken several proposals and we're in the process of going through them right now.
Okay, that's great.
You may even hear later in the agenda, we're actually looking to to secure some additional funding for this process, so.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. Well, I'm glad to hear that, but I, the last, I just want to make one comment on the last drawings that I gave to Joe that I'm assuming, hopefully correctly, that he forwarded to you guys, but the Lennon Smith plan that involves that involves running the Bar Hill Road traffic down Baldwin Street does not solve the east-west traffic congestion problem on Bar Hill Road. The design I've provided to you does, but I just want to mention that so you guys can study it a little more carefully once you get to that point. At any rate, congratulations on reaching this point. I guess we should have done it about thirty years ago, but please move ahead as courageously and forcefully as you can.
Thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
Good, yeah, thanks, guys.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak, Pat de Blasio.
Go ahead, Pat.
On behalf of myself and my family, I would like to thank Mayor Copeland and Chief King. It was very touching, their Mayor Copeland's proclamation, and most appreciated. I also appreciate, our family also appreciates the borough flying the flags that have staff. It was a great honor and just very, very moving, and we very much appreciate the community and the individuals involved, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, Pat, and again, our deepest sympathies to you and your family.
One other thing. A sincere thank you for the fire department in backing us up. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that wants to speak? Once more, anyone else in the room that wants to speak? Okay, we'll move forward with the regular order of business. I need a motion to approve the February eighth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes as submitted.
Bruce, so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the March twenty-twenty-one bill list.
I'll move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passes. I need a motion to approve the March twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth, April second, and ninth, twenty-twenty-one payrolls.
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bruce, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number ten-twenty, an ordinance amending and restating the Borough of Bridgeville Code of Ordinances, Chapter One, Article A, Planning Commission, in its entirety, to decrease the planning commission membership from seven members to five members, and to set forth its continued powers and duties as a borough's duly constituted local planning agency.
I shall move.
Nino, do I have a second?
Second.
Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash four, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville and the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to reimburse PennDOT for the design, construction, and inspection costs associated with curb ramps on State Route Thirty-Three-Four at the intersections of Chartiers and Winfield Streets, Chartiers and Bank Streets, and Lesnet Road and Sarah Street.
Bruce, so moved.
I'll second.
BJ, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash five, a resolution authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. Note, authorize us applying for a grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to fund half of the cost of the comprehensive plan update project.
So moved, Nick.
I'll start. Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash six, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, disposing of records in compliance with the Municipal Records Manual approved on July sixteenth, nineteen ninety-three, in accordance with Act Four Twenty-Eight of nineteen sixty-eight.
Bruce, so moved.
Do I have a second? Joe, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash seven, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville authorizing Borough Manager Joseph Cower to execute documents and act on behalf of the Borough of Bridgeville for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Note, this is the Pima demolition project of flood-prone structures on Baldwin Street.
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Nick, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash eight, a resolution of the Borough Council and Mayor of Borough of Bridgeville opposing the proposed tolling of Interstate Seventy-Nine at the Bridgeville interchange.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Incidentally, there appears to be a support from our neighboring communities to passing a group resolution to this, so opposing that toll. I need a motion to authorize entering into a lease agreement with the Bridgeville Athletics Association for the concession stand in Chartiers Park for the year twenty-twenty-one.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to accept the twenty-twenty audit as prepared by the Borough Auditors, Hosack, Spect, Mutzel, and Wood.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to approve granting local earned income tax credits for year twenty-twenty to active Bridgeville volunteer firefighters that have been certified as eligible by the Borough Manager and Fire Chief in accordance with Chapter Twenty-Four, Part One, Section One-Eleven of the Bridgeville Code of Ordinances.
So move.
Bruce, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to ratify the disbursement of thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents from the Capital Projects Fund to Skier Ready Site Development and Paving Company for partial payment number four of the McLaughlin Run Park Improvements Project.
I shall move.
Bruce made a motion, do I have a second?
Yes, second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to authorize the execution of change order number two from the McLaughlin Run Park Flood Mitigation Project, an amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars to LMNR Excavating LLC to address unforeseen conditions associated with reestablishing a stable parking lot subbase that was damaged during the construction activities necessary to complete the project. Under a note, a majority of these costs associated with this change order are to be paid from the award of GEDF grant for this project.
I shall move.
And a second? Bruce, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to authorize a Borough Engineer to prepare project specifications and advertise for bids, the sanitary sewer backflow preventer Phase Four project.
Actually, I have a question. I was wondering if I get clarification on, are they responsible for replacing the sidewalks as well in that grant, in that phase?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, Joe? Does that answer your question, Nick?
Yes, it does, thank you. So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to authorize the execution of a new water shut-off agreement with the Pennsylvania American Water Company relative to residential landlord ratepayers shut-offs in compliance with the Utility Service Tenants Right Act.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to accept and pay any commission due February twenty-twenty real estate tax collector report.
I'll move.
Bruce.
Second.
Opposed? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
I was disrupted by a resident. Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January twenty-twenty treasures report.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I need a motion to accept the February twenty-twenty-one police report.
Bruce, so moved.
Nick, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Did you skip number four?
Yeah.
I did, I did, not intentional. Consider action on the, under business number four, okay, I got you. We need to consider action on a conditional use application for six-twenty-one McLaughlin Run submitted by Antonio Caricella of Fully Cocked M O L L C.
I'd like to suggest the-
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, we had a public hearing prior to this and entertained comments. We had further discussion after that public hearing, and Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
I'd like to make an amendment to that conditional use, just to require to have a fire department-approved wire, smoke, and fire alarm at the, at the business that will call the security company to notify nine-one-one, so the fire department would find out sooner.
Okay, so we will entertain a motion to accept that, the conditional use application with a conditional, a fourth conditional use as stated by Joe Verducci. All, do I have a motion for that?
And that would be for the record, in addition to those recommended by the planning commission. Sorry.
Gotcha. All in favor? I'm sorry, I need a motion, I need a motion.
Bruce, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
BJ, second, Joe, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And I apologize for skipping over that. Okay, on the committee reports, Administration, Virginia Schneider.
Thanks, Bill. All I really have is that the own, the non-uniform employees have been educated, explained the new handbook with their job descriptions, and have acknowledged and signed off on that, on the, on the handbook, and that'll be placed in their personal files, and the newsletter has been mailed and received around town, and there are extra digital copies available at the, at the borough. It's also on the website, so there's a digital copy, copy there, and that's all. Yeah.
Thanks, BJ, I mean, that's both of those terrific news, the-
Yeah.
Job descriptions and whatnot have been, we've been working on that for quite some time, and it's nice to see fruition, so appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that.
We've gotten some good feedback on the newsletter and speaking to Joe Cower. It's a work in progress, so as we move forward, there'll be more things included, but it is nice to have.
I like the part where Joe's gonna, Joe's office will be sending it to all the new residents the first month that they moved in, so it's a very good informational piece, so great job, Joe.
Okay, Finance, Joe Verducci.
Okay, just a quick update, as you saw in the, the different meeting notes, the two thousand twenty audit was completed. There were no findings or observations, which is always good. Great job by, by the administrative staff and Joe to take care of the documentation, which is always so important, is we also voted on, there were thirteen firefighters that qualified for the firefighter local earned income tax that was coordinated with the fire chief. Much appreciated. That maximum cost will be thirty-nine hundred dollars. The Workers' Compensation Safety Committee, which is something that we brought up a few months ago that I thought was a great idea, and sure enough, Joe Cower found a way to, to, to create it and also get a five percent discount on the firefighter's compensation policy if we go through these processes, so it's a great idea, and then we're also going to be saving a little bit of money there, so great job. As far as the tax collector compensation, we had a memorandum of understanding in regards to taking care of that documentation, which has to do with the borough staff, if necessary, if they need to help in some of those collection duties. And unfortunately, as I think I stated in the last, the budget, we were a little bit over in regards to, for some reason, the snow removal so far this year, so that was a little tough. And the liquid fuels tax, we found out that the amount is actually lower than it was last year, which was expected just based on the whole COVID and, and everything going on, so we'll have hundred and thirty-nine thousand and some change to be used towards annual paving the streets. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Joe. Parks and Recreation, Joe Colosimo.
Ed, I have too much, President. Public Works has been doing some work down in the Chartiers Park and over at McLaughlin, trying to get ready, I guess, for the spring, put some drainage pipes in along the walking trail, put some lights in the storage shed, at the request of the BAA, they store some of their material over there, it's dark. They were painting bathrooms down in the restrooms by Chartiers Number One, repaired the roadway going into the park where it was washed out. Over McLaughlin Park, they're digging up, ready to install new mulch, some mulch piles up under the swings and whatnot. Talked to Cheryl Valentino today, so far, we've got about eight requests for permits for the shelters. She says it's a little bit slow with the COVID and whatnot, I guess it could be part of it, people are waiting to see what happens, I would assume. And as an aside, we heard from the American Legion, and they have stated that they are canceling the Memorial Day parade for this year. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Under Public Works, Nino Petroselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Verducci and Joe Colosimo give you the report on what I have here as well. Very well done, both of you. I was figuring about ten thousand dollar more that we spent for this winter, between the overtime and salt and everything. Other than that, I can give you the information very little. Everything has been said very well by Mr. Verducci and Colosimo. And let's go on to personnel here. As you all know, that Charlie is no longer with us. His last day was February the twelve, and the new assistant, Foreman, it is Craig El- Elot took over his dues, his duty at February thirteen, and the new labor, Mike Maglan, started work on two twenty-two, February twenty-two. Other than that, it's a regular maintenance that we do all the time, all year long, the trucks and everything else. Other than that, nothing else. Everything in the public court, that's just excellent. And thank to Joe, he does a heck of a good job, and they do a good job. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Nino.
Thank you.
Public Safety, Bruce Gallarducci.
Yeah, the only thing I have, Bill, is the, Public Safety Committee needs to have a meeting to discuss several items and the, the contract coming up, so once I can get with Joe Cower and Chief King and Ray Castain, we'll move forward with that, and I'll be in touch with y'all. That's the only thing I have.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Mayor, Betty Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Women's History Month, and it's because of the vision of women like Betty Mahaly, Betty Sutton, Betty Minsmoyer, Sylvia Sacristine, and Grace McDivitt that we have the Bridgeville Public Library. God bless all of the women of our borough. In regard to the Memorial Day, although the parade has been canceled, I will be accompanying members of, uh, my mind is, is going here, but I will be accompanying them to the various cemeteries on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Chief, Chad King.
Thank you, Council President. The only thing I have is just to revisit the hard work and good job that Sergeant Young did on February twenty-first with the largest single-day heroin bust in our history. He netted nearly four hundred bags of heroin on a traffic stop, and outside of a major city, that is a very significant amount of heroin to have in somebody's possession, so he got a guy off the streets and got several packages of drugs off the streets, too, so he did a great job with that, and that's all I have.
Well done, well done, Chief. I'm sorry, someone else say something?
I say, good job.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, thanks, Chief, we appreciate all the work you guys do, always.
Thank you.
Solicitor, Tom McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen. I have nothing to add to my written report. I would like to take the opportunity to extend my heartfelt personal condolences to the former mayor, de Blasio, and Pat and his family, and also, I would like to also chime in and extend my best wishes to Charlie on his retirement. Thanks, and if anybody has any questions, thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Okay, Borough Engineer, Kevin Brett.
Yes, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Presidents of the Board. We did submit our report dated March third. Quick update on the various projects currently under design for the Storm Scepter Project and roadway improvements, roadway improvements ad was sent over today, and it can go in the paper. Pricing so far this year has been very aggressive, although liquid is up in price, prices are down right now, so we think the timing's good for getting out the bid. The other projects will be starting up. The one that's most delayed is Jane Way, they're still waiting for the logs, they're supposed to be in the middle of April. Right now is the ship dates, as soon as they come in, they'll get started on it. The other projects with the weather breaking, a lot of the contractors are starting up with spring restoration, walk-throughs to get those things done, so that, the two, two projects in the park, we expect to see those by middle of April being full, full bore and get them closed out by May. Bar Hill Road works complete, they just have a little bit of restoration, and the various grant projects will be moving forward. They're working on the backflow project right now, Phase Three and Phase Four that you authorize tonight to go to bid. There's a number of HOPs needed for that, so we'll be preparing those HOPs, and then we'll get those submitted, and as soon as they come in, then we can get that out the bid, so, and we'll be working with Joe. and we'll be working with Joe on that. Any questions on our report?
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Fire Chief, Ray Castain.
Thank you, Council President. Month of February, the fire department ran 28 calls. The only thing I would like to add is our QRS vehicle is now in service. So if you see a, a new, a newer F-150 cruising around town, that is what that is. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Bill, I have a question for you, Castain.
Yes.
Ray, I was just curious, despite the Memorial Day parade being canceled, is there any consideration for putting the flag up for Memorial Day?
We will do whatever, whatever you guys want to do. Absolutely. I was kind of sad to hear that the parade's going to be canceled again this year, though I understand. So we'll do whatever, whatever you guys wish. Also, do we know anything, and maybe this isn't the forum for that, but do we know anything about the Easter egg hunt this year?
I personally haven't heard anything. I don't know if Joe Cower, if you heard from any of the organizations.
Basically, the fire department and the borough.
Right. We talked about this last year and
If we're not going to do it, what we'll do again this year, like we did last year, is we'll take the Easter bunny around town on the fire truck, like we do with Santa every year, which got awesome reviews last year. A lot of people were happy to see that. So if we can just in the near, very near future, make a, a decision as to whether or not we're going to do that. And if we're not, then we'll go ahead and implement getting the Easter bunny taken around town.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea, too.
Yes.
Okay, Chief, anything else for the Chief? Okay, Southbridge EMS, Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. But the only thing to mention is that our subscription drive is about to go out. So within the next two weeks, residents should be receiving their subscriptions. So we would appreciate the residents of all our communities to help support us and subscribe if they can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan? Okay, anyone from the Historical Society on?
Yes. President Mary Wise would like to invite all of you to come to the Historical Society March 14th through the 20th from noon to three as we observe the 10th year celebration at the location. Come and see the displays that we have and the different items that are for sale. And in keeping with Women's History Month, the Tuesday, March 30th program, 7:30 at the Shark Tiers Room will be Women of World War II presented by Todd DiFestino. Thank you.
Hey, can I jump in real quick? I have a W myself. I'd just like to wish Betty a happy birthday coming up on the 14th.
Happy birthday.
Birthday, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
It's birthday, Betty. Thanks.
Okay, anyone from the library?
Yeah, this is Ben Hornbeck.
Hey, Ben. Yeah.
I just, I submitted a written report. Thank you, Mayor Copeland, for your recognition of the library and recognition of our founders. I much appreciate it. The written report just highlights some of our programs that we've been doing as well as National Library Week, which is coming up in the first week of April, April 4th through the 10th. So I had also submitted to Joe a resolution, recognize, hopefully that you would be willing to adopt recognizing National Library Week as the next meeting falls after National Library Week. It is a little early, but I was hoping to draw attention to that for the community.
I have, let me see, I think I have misplaced my copy of that resolution. Joe, do you have it by any chance?
Yes, I emailed that out to everyone. I don't have it on the laptop here, but I was hoping that we could take action on that under new business.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna have to pull it up. Yes, absolutely. We, we obviously, we, we will support that. I just have to pull up that resolution.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I, I did, I sent it to Joe a little late, so I apologize. And it is long, so you don't have to feel, don't feel obligated to read the whole thing, but I appreciate the support.
Got it. We will do that under new business. Anything else, Ben?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I did see a parking authority report. Do we have anyone from the parking authority on? No? Okay, how about the planning commission? I see a couple of people from planning commission. Do we have a report?
Yes, Justine here. Basically, what we did was discuss the 621 McLaughlin Run Road application. We applied three conditions to that application in order to move it forward on to the council. We also looked at the six comprehensive plan proposals and reviewed them prior to the meeting and we will be discussing that probably at length within the next couple of months. The idea is to narrow it down to at least three or four proposals so that those people could be interviewed. We also discussed the other items that did not completely make it into the comprehensive plan. I'm calling them low-risk, high-visibility items. We will put that on our docket for the, the year so that we can discuss them throughout the year and get some proposals presented to council. And that's about it.
Thank you, Justine. Appreciate that. Borough Manager, Joe Cower.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Now, bridging to what Justine was just talking about, we're receiving some good news today that a grant that we applied to last year for an active transportation plan that would address some and improve pedestrian concerns in the borough was awarded. We received $22,000 from the county's active Allegheny program for this project. I know last year, the planning commission had a lot of discussion on concerns with pedestrian infrastructure and issues around town regarding that. This grant will allow us to hire a consultant to take care of those issues and put a plan together to address that. Two other grant applications that were completed and submitted this past month include, included plans to improve the fitness trail around Shark Tiers Park. So hopefully we'll know later on this year where that lies. On the agenda, you saw we're working on a grant application to help fund the comprehensive plan project. The FEMA demolition grant for Baldwin Streets advancing the application or the resolution on the agenda basically just changed the contact between the old manager to myself. And lastly, there's a third application that's going to be submitted for blight removal projects that the COG is administering that will be submitted within the next month as well. We received another good news today that the borough was again, achieved banner community status for 2021. This is through the Allegheny County League of Municipalities and recognizes municipalities for professional development, fiscal management, transparency and accountability. So Bridgeville will achieve that status for 2021. That's all I have. If I have any questions on my written report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Joe? Okay. Under new business, I have located the proclamation and I will read it. It's not that long, Ben. I'll read it to, so. National Library Week, April 4th through 10th, 2021 proclamation. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out internet hotspots and laptops. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content and educational programs. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity and socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Bridgeville Borough Council proclaim National Library Week April 4th through 10th, 2021. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit Bridgeville Public Library online or in person to access resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very well said.
Anything else under new business? If I don't have anything under new business, I would take a motion for a German.
Chairman, we have a, I'm looking probably the same thing here. Then we have a, some zoning discussion here on under new business.
Zoning here, board vacancy.
Oh, I, I'm, I am sorry. Yes, we do. But the proclamation threw me off. I ran out of words. We do. We have a zoning hearing, board and vacancy. We have two applicants that have applied for this position or, or have sent their resume to us. And we need to coordinate some interviewing of these applicants. I believe there's only two. Is that correct?
Yes. They are excellent candidates. They're booked for Bridgeville. Juanier is a engineer and a, a very, very good candidate, two of them. So
Okay, so what we need to do is, do we want to go through the administration committee or do we want to do this prior to the next meeting? Where everyone can interview.
I would like to be involved.
Be nice to do it before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right, so then what we need to do is pick a couple of dates that are going to work for for the two candidates and then we as a group, it sounds like all of council wants to partake in this. Then we can, we can meet with them at the Borough Building and, and interview them. Joe, can you reach out and see if we can get a couple of dates for those two?
Yes.
Okay, and once they come in, then we can agree on it.
Do it.
I'm sorry?
If we can't come up with something, do it. Like at 6:30 before the next council meeting. Everybody will be there, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's, let's reach out, see what, you know, what they have available and if, if we can coordinate it prior to we'd be able to act on it that night. And if not, we can get them there before.
Before yes promotion, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If we have an administration committee sometime this year, I'm sure we will. The thing that I want to propose so that, that you noticed tonight. And, and actually, I'm glad. We have to do a, some reconstruction on interviews and nomination. It's healthy and it pleases everybody. So nothing that's done, that's not transparent. This is one of my topic on the administration committee. And then we bring that to council and if we were a meeting for this, we can discuss that altogether, but whatever. But that's my intention due to some other misunderstanding and this can happen and happen again and again and again. We don't need that. We have to work for the borough and we have to be friends and I'm ready. Let's, we could, just let's figure something out that's pleased everybody when they are, whether they are employee, whether they are non-uniform. We just, that's the proper thing to do. Where, where it was done 30 some year ago, things change and I'm for it. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Nino. Do we have anything else under new business? If we have nothing further, I will now take a motion for a German.
Bruce, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to see everybody. Yeah.
Yes.